The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
Before we start the formal part of the meeting, I just want to acknowledge that we are meeting on Treaty 4 territory, the original lands of the Cree, Ojibwe, Soto, Dakota, Nakota, Lakota, and on the homeland of the Métis First Nation. I'd also like to take a moment of silence to recognize and honor the memory of those who lost their lives while at residential schools and those who are healing from the trauma from the residential school atrocities. I will now move into the formal part of our meeting if I can get a motion to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting and strategic planning and priorities meeting held June the 14th, 2021.
I can give you that. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Richards.
Your worship, I'll second that.
Thank you, Councilor Jenke. Any questions or concerns? All in favor? Carried. Any additions to the agenda from administration?
Yes, Your Worship, administration has one addition tonight. It's under 7C, which is Waburn Agricultural Society out our special occasion application for July 15th to 18th, 2021.
Perfect, so 7C. Anything from council? All right, we will move ahead. There's no public -- sorry. Oh, sorry. Can I get a motion for the addition to that agenda item, please?
Your worship, I'll make that a motion to add that addition.
Thank you, Councilor Van Betje.
Your worship, I'll second that.
Thank you, Councilor Corrigan. Any questions, concerns? Okay, all those in favor? Carried, thank you. All right, so there are no public hearings or notices tonight. We're going to move into delegations, proclamations, and petitions. For A, we have a proclamation for scleroderma awareness day. I apologize, I've been practicing it all day, but whereas scleroderma is a rare chronic disease that affects the immune system, connective tissues, blood vessels, skin, and internal organs such as the heart, lungs, kidneys, intestinal tract, and esophagus, whereas scleroderma is often painful and can cause disfigurement, disability, and even death, and whereas scleroderma occurs in one in 2,500 Canadians and affects women three to four times more often than men, and can also affect children, and therefore I, Laura Moore, said the deputy mayor of the city of Waburn hereby proclaim June the 29th, 2021 scleroderma awareness day here in the city of Waburn. I urge all citizens to support and acknowledge those living with scleroderma by joining in the virtual awareness campaign and activities. We wish to demonstrate that they are not alone and raise awareness in the hope for a better outcome treatment and one day a cure. And in honor of that, City Hall will be lighting up in blue the night of June the 29th for scleroderma awareness day. All right, for B, we have a credit union's Spark Center update, and I'll ask Director of Leisure Services Andrew Crowe to do that for me.
This will be my seventh update for council and the community on the Spark Center as we continue to move forward in our progress towards opening sometime this fall. And my remote needs to be turned on. There we go. Okay, so the construction of the Spark Center has been seeing some significant progress since the last update provided in February of '21. However, due to some construction and shipping delays, we haven't quite reached substantial completion yet. Initially, we had set our sights on March 31st for that target, but due to some delays that are outside of our control, we've just been waiting patiently until we can wrap things up on the construction side of this project. So since February, we've had quite a bit of progress. We've had our exercise track installed and painted, our synthetic turf is installed and ready to use, our multipurpose rooms, change rooms, the mini gym, art gallery, storage system are all complete and ready to use. Our playing climb structure tender was completed and actually the structure is now installed. Our simulator room equipment tender was awarded as well with that coming soon. Our outdoor multisport pad board system tender was awarded. We've obtained some substantial funding for the project. Our leisure services manager has been onboarded and we've begun our planning for the operations of the facility. So through the major construction phase of the project, even though it's not quite complete, we are still moving forward. So the current target date for the system commissioning is now set for late July. So once satisfactory results are obtained from that process, then the building will be handed over to the city. So the whole point of the commissioning is to ensure that the facility that we pay for is what we get and that all systems are meeting our requirements. So it's really important that we don't try to speed up this process to try to get in the building any quicker than we have to because we want to make sure that those checks and balances are done to the system and everything's working properly. So the upcoming project milestones that we have in front of us, obviously the completion of the construction, the equipment testing and commissioning, the handover of the building to the city, some major out-of-contract work, and then our facility staff onboarding and further operational planning. So following the construction and commissioning phases, we still have a lot of work to do, but we are chipping away at some of the larger items. So as mentioned, the outdoor multisport arena board system has been awarded and it will be installed in mid to late August. It'll take about five days and they'll be out of here. The indoor play equipment has been installed. It's looking really good in there. It's quite the structure. Our installation of the video simulators and equipment are set to arrive on July 5th, and we'll see those get installed within that week. And then following the building turnover, we will install our other specialized equipment and supplies. We also have to do the general building fit-up once it's handed over to us, so all of our furniture and that kind of stuff needs to be installed. Then we have to bring on our new employees and develop all of our policies. So we are making progress on some of our program development, our policy creation, our rate structures, so we'll be discussing that a little bit more tonight. So based on the contract amount for the project, for the construction phase of the project, we are actually at about 99% completion. So we are very close. We're just waiting on a few agonizing finishes to take place and then the building will be ours. So right construction has been on site for 874 days, and unfortunately, we don't have the exact number of days remaining on the project. So some good news to date, we've been really successful in receiving funding commitments towards the project. So naming rights from the Waburn Credit Union of $1 million, a recent donation from Jerry and Orlando Manil family for $300,000 for the naming of the turf field, major sponsor from the MNP for the playing climb structure of 150,000 white cap resources, Waburn Oil Women and Vitara have all committed $20,000 towards the facility for naming rights of different change rooms. And then we've also received 150,000 through Canadian Cultural Spaces Fund grant for the art gallery specifically, 1.28 million from the federal gas tax fund, and just shy of $1 million in the investing in Canadian infrastructure program. So to date, we've brought in $3.86 million of different sponsorship, donation, and grant funds. So it's a nice chunk of change that's definitely going to help us out, and it's been really promising to see the type of commitment we have from different community members and local organizations. So as I've done in my last six updates, I'll just give you a bit of a photo tour as far as where we are at. So looking at the front of the building, we now have our credit union sparks on our logo up. So that was installed about last week. Looks really good, turned out really good. The front desk rendering up in the top corner and then some actual pictures of the design. So you'll see in the front, if, I don't know how well that'll show up on TV, but we actually have some pieces from the Suris Valley inlaid into the front desk, and then we have another feature bench in the facility as well that turned out very nice. So we are taking in some of our history going into the project that way. So this is the completed food vendor lease space. It's kind of around the corner. So it's an unfinished space, and whoever is deemed the successful proponent of setting up shop in that space will be responsible to finish it how they need to put their business forward. So here are some pictures from the art gallery. You have the rendering up top, and then some photos of the space itself. So lots of natural light in a sense that won't harm any of the artwork and won't create any poor visuals on the artwork, but it still floods the space, so it's very nice. And then down here is our permanent collection, storage room, racking system. So tons of space that we can store all 200-plus pieces that we have currently in the basement of City Hall. So unfortunately, during my photo tour, there were some people working in the pottery room, so I couldn't get some, couldn't get that great of photos, but this is an idea of what the space looks like off the camera is our two kilns that are wired into the building as well. Multipurpose rooms are complete, so water services in two of the rooms, movable walls that separate the space and create a very good sound barrier there. Not like the movable walls of the past, these ones give you a real sense of quiet and... Shifting over to the community commons area, so this is the area that links the school to the rec center. So between the school and ourselves, we will share purchase in some tables and chairs to go in this area, and then the kitchen is just off the side. So a photo of the kitchen, so there's still some work to be done in the kitchen, but they hope to wrap that up in the next few weeks as well. Couple shots of what the main washrooms look like, so they are more or less complete and ready to go. And then our mechanical room, so it's all ready and running. Everything is actually operating. We're just waiting on things, a few more components to come so that we can hone everything in as it's supposed to be. And then a view from the second floor down to the synthetic turf area, so lots of natural light shining in. So I will note, this picture is very bright and there's actually no lights on in the space, so we're pretty happy with how that turned out. Feels like you're outside at times. Mini gym, again, lots of natural light coming in from the south side of the building. This is the simulator room, so all of our equipment will go in these zones here. And then the playing climb. So the structure is very large, and I couldn't even get all of it with the three pictures that would fit on this slide. This is the lobby in front, so you actually walk through the lobby and then the ceiling goes up to about 35 feet. A photo from the top, so you can look down. Turned out really good, the kids are going to love it. I might love it, too. So here's a picture of the second floor track, so you can see everything's been installed, all the lines are painted, it's turned out very well. Outdoor rink, concrete pad, boards will be coming soon. And then this is the community commons entrance, so this is a view from inside looking out, and this is what it looks from the outside. So we are also putting in a path with some lighting that'll run all the way from this community commons and link up to our trail system on the other side of the building. So that is a quick update on the building. Are there any questions or concerns from council?
Go ahead.
Thanks, Your Worship. Andrew, congratulations to you and your team on this, on this project so far. So are we still on track? Do you feel comfortable with all of the dates that were laid out last time you were here? And if you want to just remind everybody what those, those sort of dates are and when we can start going in there to run?
Yeah, so right now, the unfortunate thing is we're kind of at the mercy of shipping components that are being manufactured in other parts of the world. So our, our target date is kind of, it's a moving target. What we're really aiming for right now is the end of September, which has been bumped back about, we wanted to get into beginning of September. Now we're looking towards the end of September, but that's all going to, it's all going to factor in as far as when we get these pieces here, if they actually get installed when they're supposed to, and then how commissioning goes. So we're doing everything in our power to get ahead of a lot of those administrative duties now, so we don't have to do them once we move in the space, but we will have quite a bit of items left to be checked off once we finally get the space. So it's a bit of a moving target, but we're doing our best.
Thanks for the update.
Any other questions from council? All right, Director Crowe, thank you so much for staying on top of all of this. I know how much work you've been putting into the rates that are coming up later in council and just kind of giving us all of our updates, so thank you again very much. All right, moving on. No reports of standing committees. Number six is the consent agenda, which is the cash activity report and the building department report. May I have a motion, please?
Your worship, I'll make that motion that the following items on the consent agenda I would like to move that the following items on the consent agenda be accepted as presented, cash activity report for May and the building department report for May.
Can I have a second, please?
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Councilor Jenke. Any comments or questions for those? All in favor? Carried. All right, moving into motions, accounts payable. Can I have a motion for that, please?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'll make a motion that the purchase in the amount of $851,230.38 from June 11th to June 23rd, 2021 be approved.
Thank you, Councilor Van Betje. Can I have a second, or please?
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Thank you, Councilor Richards. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Carried. All right, we are going to shift things back over to Director of Leisure Services Crowe, the credit union spark center rates.
All right. So with the credit union spark center opening to the public in the fall of 2021, proposed list of rental rates and user fees have been developed by the leisure services department and also reviewed by the Parks and Leisure Services Commission. So rates have been developed through a process which factored in on the following criteria: operational cost estimates, cost recovery analysis, comparative cost analysis, and community expectations. So throughout the development of the proposed credit union spark center rate structure, several factors were taken into consideration to ensure that the facility remains both accessible to the community but also sustainable to operate while following the city of Waburn 50% cost recovery mandate that the leisure department follows. So due to a vast number of opportunities available within the credit union spark center, several different rates have been developed, and we'll be continuously evaluating those as we embark over the next few years of operating this facility. So what we're proposing to you today is a one-year rate structure that we can look at again next year, which will fall into schedule with our regular three-year interval rate restructure, because we are doing our best to be prepared for what this year may bring to us, but it's a brand-new facility and we aren't quite sure how it's going to operate and how user uptake's going to go. So we've done our best, but we may have to adjust things after year one. Hopefully not, but you never know. So rather than going through this line by line, I thought I would just outline some of the highlights of what we've proposed to council. So in effort to provide equal opportunity to all users, drop-in rates, membership fees, and hourly rental costs for regular user groups have been held consistent with other facilities operated by the city of Waburn. You may see some changes being a little lower or higher than other facilities, and that's just based off of our expected operating costs, but we tried to keep things as closely in line what we're doing at our other facilities as possible. Another highlight within our rates is what I call our pillar programs. So several pillar programs have been included in the proposed rates, and these programs are expected to be more or less consistent programs that we operate on an ongoing basis. So because of that reason, we've already costed them out so we could provide specific user rates for them. So these programs include before-school programming, after-school programming, youth-geared event programming, teen program, seniors' walking program, and a childminding program, which will be offered during adult drop-in activities or adult scheduled programs. So mom and dad can come to a program and drop off their kid to be looked after while they're there. So we're trying to make the environment as open and inclusive to everybody to try to engage the public. So to add to that, all other specialized programs that we put on throughout the year, since they're offered at a cost recovery basis, those registration fees may change from time to time just due to cost to putting on the program. So that's why those other rates are not included in this rate structure. Another highlight, and one of my favorite, is the leisure services super pass memberships. So in effort to increase community engagement throughout the city of Waburn leisure facilities, we put in the leisure services super pass membership. So what this is, is it's actually a membership that won't just get you into the Spark Center, but it'll get you into all of our facilities for that time period for the drop-in type programming. So you won't have to get a Spark Center membership for your family and a Leisure Center membership, you can actually just get the super pass and it'll give you access to both. So we'll have three-month, nine-month, and annual super passes available, which is, as I mentioned, they'll provide those pass holders with unlimited access to the drop-in programming, and it'll also provide members with 20% discount on select programs and select rental rates. So this super pass has been priced at a highly lucrative rate to try to entice the public to get out, to get active, and to take advantage of the facilities that we do have in place right now. And then another highlight are the party rates. So we've established some party rates, which will provide individuals or groups to take advantage of our wonderful amenities within the facility, within the credit union spark center. So rather than paying a standard hourly time if they book for up to five hours, they get a cheaper rate. So trying to get people to come use the brand-new center. So my recommendation, following an extensive process involving both city staff and Parks and Leisure Services Commission members, I would like to recommend that the proposed Spark Center user rates be adopted by Waburn City Council for the 2021-22 season, taking effect September 1st, 2021, and expiring August 31st, 2022.
Thank you for that report, Director Crowe. Can I get a motion to start the conversation, please?
Your worship, I'll make the motion that the recommendation of the Parks and Leisure Services Commission to accept the credit union spark center user rates as presented for the 2021-22 season, taking effect September 1st, 2021, to August 31st, 2022, be accepted.
Thank you, Councilor Corrigan. Can I get a second, or please?
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Councilor Jenke. Do we have any other questions for Director Crowe before we vote? Go ahead, Councilor Van Betje.
Thank you, Your Worship. Yes, I just have a couple of questions, and I commend you guys on, it looks like you've done a lot of research on developing these rates, so I thank you for that and the committee that did, went through all this work. Couple things I'm not clear on. So you mentioned the 50% recovery rate. Is that on the expected cost to operate? Is that what it's based on? And then I'm just wondering how that compares to some of our other facilities as far as our recovery rate?
Right, so leisure services with our facilities and kind of as a general, how we operate our, our department is we have a 50% cost recovery mandate. So basically what that means is 50% of our operational costs need to be made up by user fees and rates, so the taxpayers only have the burden of the other 50% on each facility. So we've done our best through, through our work to, you know, and our estimates to hopefully hit that target with these rates that we have in place, but we'll have to kind of evaluate as we go along. Right now, like, so if you were to look at the pool, we would have a little bit of lower cost recovery rate, probably at around 30 to 40%, but if you look the other way at our, at our hockey rink, you might have a higher cost recovery, so they kind of balance out. So we do our best to always be in that 50% range, and we usually budget for that, but of course, things always come up, so that's the way we go.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. That's a good explanation.
Councilor Corrigan, did you have a question? All right, any other? Oh, Councilor Van Betje, go ahead.
I have one more. Sorry. What, what, when you talked about the, the season pass or whatever for, what are the drop-in amenities that you can use?
Right, so just a couple examples of the drop-in amenities that we see being used would be the climate play structure, so families can drop in and get their kids in the playground more or less. Another one would be your walking track upstairs. We'll have drop-in time in the mini gym, you know, if, if we might have basketball time or free gym time, not free, but you know, open gym time. You may do the same for your, your turf, like the field part, so, and there may be some other programs that pop up, but that's another, just some, some options for you. And then I will point out, too, that the art gallery will always be free of charge, so there will never be a drop-in rate associated with that.
Thank you. Councilor Jenke?
Andrew, this looks great. Thanks for all your hard work. I have a couple of kind of, hopefully, simple questions just about the rentals here. If an organization is renting, say, the soccer field for kids soccer or something on a Saturday morning, and parents drop their kids off, are they expected to have some kind of a pass of their own to walk around the track?
So if they, if the parents want to make use of the track while their kids are on the field, then they'll have to pay the drop-in rate to go for their walk. But that being said, the players won't have to pay a drop-in because that rental's being offset by their, their organization.
And what if parents just want to watch?
Yeah, we'll make provisions for that. Probably what, we're looking at a few different options, but one really simple one is just different, different colored wristbands for different amenities. And then we'll also have some staff constantly monitoring all the locations within the building to make sure that nobody's taking advantage of it.
That's excellent. Second question, a couple of the things that we have on here, I know we've talked about this before, put us kind of on the periphery of competition with local businesses. Was that considered, without getting any detail, was that considered with, you said your price structure?
Yeah, so we try to keep our price structures consistent without undercutting anybody.
Excellent, thank you. Great work.
Right. Any other questions from council? Okay, we have a, oh, thank you so much, Director Crowe. Do we, we have a motion on the table? All those in favor? Carried. Okay, moving on to 7C, which was our addition, the Waburn Agricultural Society. City Manager Warren, please.
Thanks, Your Worship. So we received a request from the Waburn Agricultural Society for an outdoor special occasion application for their fair coming up on July 15th to 18th. They're looking to serve alcohol on July 15th from 4:00 PM till 12:00 AM. Same times on July 16th. On July 17th, they want to go from 12:00 PM until 1:00 AM. On July 18th, they want to go from 12:00 PM till 8:00 PM. What we did is we reviewed the application, it meets all the requirements, they actually show us where the liquor will be sold, they actually have a spot rate on the, on the grounds for that. We also had our deputy police chief, Brent Fannas, also look over the request, and there was no concerns brought forth from him. The other thing that we do talk to any group still with COVID still in place is to talk to the business response team. So the problem's always asked at any large event for them to have that conversation. So right now, we're still asking them to have the guidance provided for their event, which they said they will be contacting them, and just to make sure if there's any restrictions still in place, because we know that on July 11th, restrictions will be lifted, but just to have that conversation with them to make sure that there's anything that does come up they know and are aware of, to make sure that it's a great event for everyone who does attend. But other than that, administration has no concerns with the request provided.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Can I have a motion for that, please?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'll make a motion that council support the request of the Waburn Agriculture Society to make that applicant. to make that application for the issuance of an outdoor liquor permit by Saskatchewan Liquor and Gaming Authority for the following dates and times. Thursday, July 15th, 2021, 4:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. Friday, July 16th, 2021, 4:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. Saturday, July 17th, 2021, noon, 12:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m. Sunday, July 18th, 2021, noon, 12:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Councilors Van Betchu and Jenke. Any questions for administration from council? One quick dig, not a minute before noon. That's going out to Councilor Mickel today because he can't be here to question that. All of those in favor? Carried. Moving into introduction of bylaws, I'm going to hand everything over to Director of Engineering Wilkinson, please.
Thank you very much and good evening. So I'm going to do a follow-up report to the public consultation for the traffic bylaw. So on June 14th, 2021, a presentation and first reading of the traffic bylaw 2021-3420 was done at the city council meeting. Public notice was advertised as per the City of Weyburn Public Notice Policy Bylaw 2003-2094. There were eight submissions from the public regarding the traffic bylaw, and below is a summary from the public consultation. Issue one was the use of engine retarder brakes. So residents are concerned with the use of engine retarder brakes within city limits. These are not permitted within the city limits as stated in the traffic bylaw. The Weyburn Police Service will continue enforcement, and the engineering department is going to verify signs are posted at each end of the city limits so that people are aware that are entering the city limits. We have no recommended amendment to the bylaw because this already is in there. Truck route, First Avenue, Highway 13. Residents would like the removal of First Avenue from the truck route. As a municipality, we are required to provide heavy trucks a truck route. We can encourage heavy trucks to bypass the city, but the city does not have jurisdiction to set up a truck route outside our city limits. We have no alternate options that would work to bypass them to the north of the city that still falls within the city limits. In 2019, the Ministry of Highways and Infrastructure, the City of Weyburn, and the RM of Weyburn partnered to do a regional transportation study. An external bypass for a truck route was identified as a long-term priority as part of this study. With this being a long-term priority, the ministry has other identified projects that they are currently focusing on. So the engineering department will continue conversations with the ministry on the priority of an alternate truck route. At this time, though, we have no recommended amendment to the bylaw. The intersection of First Avenue and 16th Street. Residents near the intersection of First Avenue and 16th Street have issues with the noise at this intersection due to heavy acceleration and stopping at the four-way stop signs. Suggestions of additional trees, sound barriers, and traffic control measures at intersections further east are out of the scope of the traffic bylaw and would need to be assessed by the city separately. There is a speed increase from 40 kilometers to 50 kilometers an hour from 13th Street to 16th Street. Engineering and consultation with the Weyburn Police Service is proposing that the speed increase be moved to east of 16th Street, and this proposed amendment is showing how it would look in the bylaw. And basically, the idea behind that is why speed up to 50 to have them stop so soon? And we're hoping by that side of the intersection, we could reduce some of the noise on that side of it. So that's why we are proposing to move that 50 kilometer an hour further east. Elks Park. Elks Park was brought forward by a resident to become a 30 kilometer an hour zone. It would become a designated recreational area. The proposed amendment would be listed in Schedule D as shown below. So eastbound traffic would be from Birch Drive to Duke Street, and then westbound would be Zabel Bay to Elm Crescent. And so it's just that the streets are labeled different on each side in that area, so that is the same area. It's just if you're traveling east versus westbound. So that is a proposed amendment. So speed limit of 40 kilometers an hour. A resident would like to ensure that the general speed limit remains at 40 kilometers an hour, and it is confirmed that the general speed limit is not proposed to be changed and would stay at 40 kilometers an hour, so there is no proposed amendment to the bylaw. School zone time restrictions. A resident was concerned about what the speed limit would increase to when a school zone is not in effect, from your 7:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., and we have confirmed it would default to the general speed limit of 40 kilometers an hour. This resident has stated they're not opposed, they just wanted confirmation on that. So we are not recommending any proposed amendment to the bylaw. Speeding on the truck route. Many of the residents brought up speeding on areas of the truck route, particularly where people are entering city limits. With the proposed changes, we have reduced the speeds on both Highway 35 North and Highway 13th East, further out from residential areas, to try and get vehicles to slow down. The Weyburn Police Service is aware of these concerns and will increase monitoring and enforcement, so at this time, we do not have an proposed amendment to the bylaw based on this concern. Parking on an alley. This concern was not brought forward by a formal submission to the traffic bylaw public consultation, but the Weyburn Police Service and the engineering department were reviewing the wording on parking on a back alley due to a recent increase in issues. The current bylaw reads as, "No person shall park a vehicle on any alley except that a vehicle may be parked in an alley, one, for no more than 30 minutes, two, where continuously engaged in loading or unloading, and, three, on Sundays or holidays or any other days between the hours of 8:00 p.m. and 10:30 a.m." We're proposing a clear distinction on this. Our proposed amendment would be, "No vehicle should park on any alley except that a vehicle may be parked on an alley when continuously engaged in loading or unloading and for no more than 60 minutes." So we are giving a longer time, but they must be engaged in loading and unloading. So just a summary of the amendments that are proposed based on the public consultation. One is move the increase to 50 kilometers an hour to east of 16th Street, and the amendment is shown below in Schedule C. Add Elk Parks to a designated recreational zone. This would be an amendment to Schedule D, which is a designated recreational area and is shown below. And then three, clarify the wording for parking on an alley. This would be an amendment to Section 26 of Part 5, Parking and Stopping, and particularly under Parking prohibited off a public highway. It would read, "No person shall park a vehicle on any alley except that a vehicle may be parked on an alley when continuously engaged in loading or unloading and for no more than 60 minutes." Thank you.
Thank you, Director Wilkinson. So I guess we'll start with a motion for the amendments.
Thanks, your worship. I would make a motion that bylaw 2021-3420, the City of Weyburn traffic bylaw, be read a second time with the following amendments to be accepted. Adjust the wording to clarify parking in alleys in Section 26 of the bylaw. Eliminate speed increase on First Avenue Northeast from 13th Street Northeast to 16th Street for east-west traffic on Schedule C. And then add Elk's Park on Douglas Road to the designated recreational areas in Schedule D.
Thank you, Councilor Richards. Can I have a second or please?
Your worship, I'll second that.
Thank you, Councilor Corrigan. Is there any questions from council? Go ahead, sir.
Thanks, your worship. Good work, Director Wilkinson. This is a, this is a big bylaw, so the fact that these are the few changes we're bringing back, to me, this just speaks to your work. Two things, I did reach out to some friends and relatives in the trucking industry. The business with the engine brakes inside the city limits, this is very common practice that that's not legal to use those inside of urban boundaries, so I would put our faith in the Weyburn Police Service that they'll clean that up quickly. Second comment to you only on alleys, I appreciate the clarification that it's loading and unloading and 60 minutes. Not an either-or, and I do assume, and I think I'm right, when I say that is the commercial downtown core or also the back alley behind your house.
Absolutely, yep.
Great, thank you.
Councilor Van Betchu?
Thank you, your worship. Yes, I think, great work, Jen. I think the explanation on the public's concerns was fantastic. I think you articulated it so well. And I did have a question for you that a resident brought to me about the little two-wheeled scooters that some of the kids ride along the bikes and they sneak up behind some of the residents when they're walking. And so I didn't know if they could be included in the inline skating and that section of the bylaw, or if it's just maybe, there's just so many items, and I don't know if you can include everything in there.
Yeah, that's the hard part, is clarifying, because obviously, people all think of scooters as different things, and it's distinguishable between a medical scooter versus the two-wheeled scooter with the kids. And I think, I think that's where it gets difficult for that language. And, you know, they're basically, with the inline skates, roller skates, and skateboards, it's basically, you know, don't go on a highway, and you can't ride them in the downtown. They are allowed on sidewalks, they're just not allowed on the downtown ones. So that would be, I guess, up to discretion of council if you want to clarify that wording.
Yeah, I'd like to see where you have, there's always something different.
Councilor Jenke, and then Councilor Corrigan.
In regards to the intersection of First Avenue and 16th Street, just looking around the table here, Councilor Richards, this might be a wonderful opportunity to discuss replacing a four-way stop with traffic lights.
Well, thanks for bringing that up, Councilor Jenke. I know that engineering has talked about that, and right now, with the price of installing lights, that's probably a future project, I think. But I love the idea.
Yeah, so that would not be tied to the traffic bylaw. That would be a decision that the city could budget for and look at, along in consultation with the Weyburn Police Service, but it is not within the designation of the traffic bylaw.
Thank you, your worship. Again, I'd like to echo my colleagues' compliments for the work done on this. Tremendous job. Number of the calls that I received in the last couple of weeks was in regards to the 30-kilometer speed limit around school zones and recreational facilities, and why it was not, why it's all year long and not just from September through June. Could you comment on that and clarify that for our viewers?
Yeah, so I think a big thing that ties the school zone and recreational areas to 365 days a year is the fact that they all have playgrounds. And that is the big thing with the schools, is we see a lot of families using those school playgrounds all year round, and we want to ensure that every day of the week, the most vulnerable pedestrians, the younger toddlers and the kids with the young families, they are being protected with that 30 kilometers an hour. But we are putting it from that 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. so that outside those hours, we know that those most vulnerable pedestrians most likely aren't going to be there. So I think it's, I think it's a good compromise to still make traffic flow, but also protect the most vulnerable pedestrians.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
I just want to take this opportunity to thank each and every one of those residents who took the time to read through the bylaw while it was put out in the paper. Thank you so much for your submissions. We try, as counselors, to get around to every area of the city and, you know, see your concerns, but it's great when we get the feedback and so we can pass it along to administration. So thank you again. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we have, oh, sorry, Councilor Corrigan.
Sorry, just one more question. What is, in regards to electric skateboards and scooters, how do we police that? Or how does this bylaw address those issues, or does it?
So the, we do address, like, a motorized wheelchair, a motorized scooter, and a Segway. It is specifically addressed that they are, because it is for a medical use, they are considered a pedestrian, and we do ask that, that they do take precautions, but they, you know, they stick to the right of the sidewalk when passing people, and then as well as they are allowed on the roadway if there is no sidewalk, but they must maintain to the right of it. As for, like, e-scooters and stuff, they actually are banned through the Traffic Safety Act in Saskatchewan, so that is, is a higher level of board, and we have not specifically done anything within our bylaw. It would just default to the Traffic Safety Act.
Just a quick follow-up. Would you say that the bylaw current, that we are proposing now, gives us more ability to police those issues now than before?
Yeah, absolutely. We've done a lot more clarification on what, how they should be driving, where they should be driving, so we do have a lot more clarification on that, so there shouldn't be any discrepancies on where you can drive them and how you should be driving them. So it does give the Weyburn Police Department, I think, a chance, one, to provide education to these people, but two, enforce it and make sure that they are following the laws of the road and sidewalks, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We have a motion on the floor for second reading with amendments. All those in favor? Carried. Go ahead, Councilor Richards.
Thanks, your worship. I hope I get this right. I would make a motion that bylaw 2021-3430, the City of Weyburn amended traffic bylaw, be read a third time and passed.
Thank you, Councilor Richards. Can I have a second for that, please?
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
Councilor Corrigan, any other comments or questions? All those in favor? Carried. All right, I'm going to send this over to administration. This doesn't mean that the bylaw is passed, correct, Annette? It's going up for one more public?
The bylaw is passed. The bylaw is passed, so we will probably get it stamped and signed and on the city website in the next few days.
Perfect. Sorry, I should have got clarification earlier. All right, moving on. No unfinished business. So moving into new business, we have a discretionary use development permit, and I will let Development Officer Janine Fletcher take over.
Good evening, councilors. A discretionary use development permit application from Shurtle Enterprise has been received for the development of a plumbing and heating shop, along with offices for administration at 105 Third Street Southeast in the existing vacant building, which was formerly Home Hardware. Zoning bylaw amendment was recently passed by council to add plumbing, heating, and sheet metal shop to the Riverfront Market Zone as a discretionary use. Now, the applicant has submitted their corresponding development permit application. Both plumbing and heating shop and offices for administration, sales, or general business in nature, are considered discretionary uses in the zoning bylaw, so they both require council approval. Discretionary uses require neighborhood notices to be sent out to all property owners within a 75-meter radius of the property. Those notices were sent on June 15th, and no responses to those notices have been received. Shurtle Enterprise is looking to acquire the property at 105 Third Street South. They are looking to develop a plumbing and heating shop. Currently, they are Vortex Plumbing and Heating, along with offices for administration for their mega-dry disaster restoration and mega-dry franchise businesses. The proposal is to operate those businesses within the existing building, and they submitted an application for this proposal and have included all of the required documentation, including building floor plans, site plan, and building renderings. Some of these have changed since the zoning bylaw amendment stage, but not substantially. The building is approximately 8,600 square feet, with approximately 1,900 square feet devoted to the offices portion, and 6,700 square feet for the plumbing and heating portion. The applicant is currently looking at repaving the parking lot, re-siding some of the building, creating new doors and window openings, and installing an overhead door on the western side of the building. So I've included some images of the existing building, as well as the updated renderings that have been submitted. So that's facing south, kind of from the highway, and again, facing south from a different angle. Originally, they had parking on the closer side of the building, but now they've moved it so that you would park facing the highway, and they've proposed to install some bollards along the First Avenue side to prevent through traffic, and this was an issue raised by council at one of the meetings about the zoning bylaw amendment. The site plan, which includes, I believe it's 11 parking spaces, including a barrier-free parking space, which exceeds what's required. And the building floor plan, so you can kind of see where all the offices will be and the loading space, and that'll be subject to the building permit process if this is approved. So the property was re- So the property was previously used for a home improvement center. The property is zoned Riverfront Market, which allows for a plumbing and heating shop and offices for administration as discretionary uses. Plumbing and heating shop must meet the following development standards. No outdoor storage on the property. Lot area shall be large enough to accommodate off-street parking, or off-street loading spaces required. There shall be landscaping or screening on-site to buffer the plumbing and heating shop from neighboring residentially zoned properties. The property meets all of these standards as two loading spaces can be accommodated on the site, one exterior and one interior. There is currently landscaping the southern portion of the property from the neighboring residentially zoned properties. And no outdoor storage is currently proposed. The development is required to provide a minimum of eight parking spaces, and it includes 11 parking spaces, so the parking requirement is met. There is a map of where the subject property is. And then there's a close-up version of the aerial imagery of what the existing building looks like. So council has three options tonight. The first would be to approve the development permit without further conditions. Option number two would be that council approves development permit 2021.20.020 for plumbing and heating shop and offices at 105 Third Street Southeast, subject to the following conditions. Eight off-street parking spaces shall be provided, two loading spaces. No outdoor storage shall be permitted. Landscaping and/or screening in accordance with Section 4.7 shall be along the southern property boundary. Barriers along the western property line shall be installed to the satisfaction of the development officer and director of engineering. Building permit shall be obtained, and a City of Weyburn business license shall be obtained. Option number three would be that council refuses the development permit and would have to provide reasonings tonight. So the staff recommendation would be that the development permit meets the requirements of the zoning bylaw in terms of parking and loading. Additionally, no neighborhood concerns or comments are provided. Therefore, staff are recommending option number two, to approve the discretionary development permit 2021.020 with the conditions listed.
Thank you so much. Can I have a motion, please?
Your worship, I am pleased to move the discretionary use permit application 2021.020 from Shurtle Enterprises for the development of a plumbing and heating shop along with offices at 105 Third Street Southeast, Block 1, Lot 21 through 26, Plan G 3621. Be accepted, subject to the conditions presented.
Thank you, Council Jenke. Can I have a second, or please?
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Council Van Betchu. Do we have any questions? All right, all those in favor? Carried unanimously. Development Officer Fletcher, I will let you take the floor again with the home occupation application.
Okay, so staff have received an application to operate a childcare business or a day home out of their residence at 823 Bison Avenue. It's located in R2 Zone. The business will operate 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on weekdays. This would be considered a controversial use in the zoning bylaw as the occupation involves clients being directed to the home throughout the day. With minimal anticipated increase to traffic flow, parking in the rear will be available to clients. So a neighborhood notice was sent out on June 15 to all neighbors within 50-meter radius of the applicant's home. They were given the opportunity to comment on the application, and no concerns or objections have been received. And there's a map of where the property is located. Home-based occupations are permitted use, meaning that landowners have the right to undertake the use in accordance with the bylaw unless provisions of the bylaw are specifically contravened. Home-based occupations generally must meet the following provisions. They must be incidental to the use of the premise as a residence, be compatible with the residential uses, be limited in extent in terms of volume of materials sold and number of clients, not substantially increase the volume of traffic, and not detract from the residential character of the zone. It would be considered a controversial occupation under Section 5.1.19 of the zoning bylaw since clients are being directed to the home. They have operated out of their previous home. However, since they are changing locations, a new application was required to ensure compliance. Staff have reviewed the application and are of the opinion that the home occupation application meets the requirements of the zoning bylaw, therefore are recommending number two to council, or number one to council. Number one is that council approves home-based business permit 2021.005 at 823 Bison Avenue, subject to the following conditions. And I won't read them all out, they're pretty standard for home occupations. For this one, the operating hours have been limited to 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. In accordance with the Childcare Act, no more than eight children, including the children of the care provider, may be cared for at the residence at one time. Provincial regulations and licensing requirements must be followed where applicable. And the other ones are standard. Or option number two would be refusal of the home-based business permit for the following reasons. And the reason would have to be provided by the officer making that motion.
Thank you very much, Development Officer Fletcher. Can I have a motion, please?
Your worship, I am pleased to move that home application permit 2021.005 for the operation of a childcare business, day home, at 823 Bison Avenue, Lot 6, Block B, Plan FK 4662, be approved, subject to the conditions presented.
Thank you, Council Jenke. Can I have a second, or please?
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Thank you, Council Richards. Any questions or concerns? Council Richards.
Thanks, Your Worship. Janine, I'm in favor of this, I'll vote for it. But I want to be sure, if I understand correctly from the map, this is a housing authority building.
Correct.
So do they permit this use within that facility? And have we covered that base, I guess?
Yes, I've received owner authorization to make the application, and they've previously allowed the same applicant to operate out of one of their other locations.
Excellent, thank you.
All those in favor? Carried unanimously. Thank you so much. Moving into inquiries or announcements, I'll ask from administration, is there anything you wanted to let the public know? All right, council. Our next meeting is July 19, which is Monday, July 19. There is only one meeting in July, so anybody who wants to come the week before, we're not going to be here. The Chamber Parade, it's a busy week for Weyburn. If you want to head out to the streets, Wednesday, June 30, at 10:30. There's going to be lots of people celebrating the fact that we're almost free of this COVID. So we encourage everybody to get out and wave to everybody who has taken the time to decorate some floats. We will be having Canada Day celebrations here in Weyburn on July 1. 10 o'clock at the Leisure Center, we're going to have the color party kicking everything off, along with some speeches. And at 10:30, free swim start. I just want to remind anybody that does want to come for that free swim, though, please pre-book through the booking application that we've got on the City of Weyburn website. The Poppy is celebrating its 100th anniversary. So Weyburn City Hall will be lit up in red on July 6 to commemorate this incredible milestone. The Poppy has become a respectful symbol worn by Canadians from the last Friday in October to November 11. It is a visual pledge to honor Canada's veterans and never forget those who sacrificed for their freedoms, for, rather, who sacrificed for the freedoms we enjoy today. We thank the Royal Canadian Legion, especially the Weyburn branch, for their service to our community. So we will be lit up downtown in red on July 6. And last but not least, the Weyburn Fair. We are really going to kick COVID's butt. The Weyburn Ag Society has announced that they are going to be holding a fair July 15 to the 18. There's going to be rides and concessions and a demo derby. So watch the Weyburn Ag Society social media pages, and they'll have lots more details coming up. Anything else from council, one more time? All right, moving on to notice of motion, which is none. It is 5:59, I call adjournment.